Come to order, please. It is seven o'clock, so I'll just go ahead and call the meeting to order. Everyone is here except Brian Shulon, who is not with us this evening, is not able to make the meeting. And Mr. Light had given us all a heads up that he may be running late due to the bad weather for his commute, so we do expect him to join us this evening. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of leeches.
I pledge the leeches to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Aye, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They have an adoption for the minutes from August. I know we've had some changes. Michelle, were those incorporated entities?
No, ma'am.
So, but you can...
So, the draft that's online is the initial draft that was put out.
Okay.
If you would like to amend them to include the email that was sent to commissioners for Mrs. Hunt, then we can just reference that to include it.
Okay.
With any other changes that any members may have.
Thank you. All right. And with that, do we have a motion in regards to the minutes?
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the minutes to include the amendment that Michelle had brought forward.
All right. That sounds good. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to the first item on the agenda this evening, the special exception 24-03-04 Potomac Appalachian Trail Club tourist home. Would you mind to queue that up for us, please, Miss Comers?
Yes, ma'am. The Potomac Appalachian Trail Club owns property located at 120 Mount Marshall Road, identified by tax number 19-1-7. The property is 32 acres in size and is owned conservation. They're proposing to use existing cabin, cabin as a one-bedroom tourist home for their club members only, two at the 170-36E and 170-66K. The Health Department commented in June that a report from an OSE revealed the septic tank had some issues. They recommended repairs be done, and in fact, they were done, and the system now meets all proper standards. And they had stated in one of their letters that it was approved for three bedrooms. VDA has no objections to the request. Staff has recommended the following conditions: maximum of one bedroom, two adults and accompanying children. This was modified to include children as a request of the applicant. Staff saw no reason not to since the septic system was approved for three bedrooms. No fees or risks to be offered to the renters, that the permit terminates upon sale or transfer of the property, and that the property may not be subleased, rented by third party, or used as a sort of town share.
Thank you. And are the owners present? Is there anything you would like to add at this time? All right. If there's nothing to add at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for special exception.
I think they did not.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I got mixed signals.
Good evening. My name is John Hendrick. I'm a resident of the Rappahanna County. Christine Smith is my supervisor. I live off of Holland Road, off of Route 231, as you're going to Madison. I'm also a, I'm also an ambulance driver for the Sperryville Rescue. I'm also an elected officer in the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. Very, very briefly about Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. The cabin, it's called a Horwitz cabin, and Sue's going to discuss that a little bit more. This is a members-only cabin. In other words, you cannot rent this cabin unless you're a member of Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. And the only, we do not advertise except on our own website. And if you, if you want to rent it, you go on our website, sign up, and we know who you are because you're a member and we've got data on you. So, we take, we take the, we take it very, very seriously. The, the club, of course, you might know, we maintain 350 miles of trails in Shenandoah National Park to include all of the Appalachian Trail and a number of side trails in Rappahannock County. This is all free labor. We don't charge, we don't charge anybody anything. The proceeds from the cabin is used to, for maintenance equipment, chainsaws, weeders, all the stuff that you need in order to dig and maintain on trails. So, with that, let me go ahead and turn it over to Sue. Sue is the maintainer of the Horwitz cabin.
Thanks, sir. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sue Eisenfeld. My husband and I maintain this cabin, which we call the Horwitz Cabin, as volunteer caretakers. We've been doing that for the last 10 years. Before that, we, the two of us actually rented the cabin from the previous owner, who was Ellie Horwitz. So, we've been there at that location for 12 years, and we have been, you know, weekenders and hikers in Rappahannock County since 1992. We got married in this county 27 years ago. And I'm telling you all this because I just want you to know that though I'm an Arlington resident, we have a deep interest and love of Rappahannock County, and we care about the future of the county. We have gotten to know our neighbors over these many years with this cabin. We have good relationships with the neighbors on Mount Marshall Road. We have heard no complaints over the years from traffic or any of the other issues that I know are of concern with tourist homes. And I just wanted to say, too, that I think unlike all of the other B&amp;Bs, I think I can say, one of the things that's unique about the PATC, aside from the fact that it's a nonprofit, is that we have a whole system behind it. It is not just me and Neil taking care of this cabin and 32 acres of land. It's the whole network of volunteers that the entire club is made up of. So, when we don't have the expertise to do something that this land or property needs, there are other people in the club that we call on. There's also a district supervisor. There's a cabin supervisor that takes care of 40 cabins in a bunch of different states. And so, we have that support behind us. We are here to clean, to take care of things that get reported by the renters. The renters are actually some of our best resource in that they have to, they take their trash, they clean up, and they submit a report every time they leave the cabin as to what was the condition, how did they find it, any problems that they have. So, Neil and I get those reports, and then we can take care of anything that has come up, which, you know, aside from that, we do things like invasive plant removal and deal with drainage and, you know, all the stuff that everybody has to take care of. I also just wanted to say, too, that the previous owner, Ellie Horwitz, and her husband built this cabin by hand in 1973. It is a one-room cabin. It is contemporary and rustic at the same time. They were bushwhackers. They were hikers. They were land stewards. And when she wanted to sell the cabin, I convinced her to sell it to the PATC, or I didn't, I didn't have to twist her arm. She was interested in selling it to the PATC because they were also a land steward organization, and she knew that families would get to come here and enjoy Rappahannock County the way that, you know, all the residents here get to enjoy it every day. So, I am interested in keeping this cabin in a land stewardship organization to fulfill her legacy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for special exception 24-03-04, the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. Anyone that wishes to speak on this tourist home application, please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside. And if you could keep your comments to less than five minutes, that would be great.
Fine. I'm Dennis Barry. I live in the Hampton District. I live at 80 Mount Marshall Road. So, my property, which is not just the 25 acres at number 80, but it's another two 25-acre lots going up the road toward the Potomac Appalachian Trail property. First, let me say, I'm a member of the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. I have been for more than 50 years, and it is a very fine organization. I do have some comments on the application. One is to frankly express annoyance. The application on its face, on the very first page says, you know, have the notice, that the neighbor's been notified with a box to check yes or no. It's checked yes. I hadn't been notified of this. First I knew of it was a sign put up by the county. Second, Matt Van Hook, whose property abuts the PATC property, was not notified of this. He told me that on the weekend. Now, that in itself, I don't think is grounds for denying the application, but I think it, well, let me just leave it that it annoyed me. The first page of the application also has a question on the current use of the property. That's been left blank, which I think would make it an incomplete application. But the current use of the property is as a tourist home. And you can go to the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club website right now. I did it this morning. And you can, if you're a member, you can rent that cabin. I don't know if the applicable lodging, sales, or whatever taxes have been paid on this for the last four, five, six years, however long the club has owned it and rented it out. But if they haven't been, I think a condition of approval should be an account, accounting to the governmental tax authorities along with payment of all the taxes due, if any. I think every taxpayer in the county ought to care about that. Now, with respect to the septic system, there's an inconsistency in the documents that I read, and if I fail to read everything that I should have, I apologize. But I tried to look at it all. And the Department of Health recommended a current assessment on the viability of the septic system by an OSE, on-site soil examiner, to determine if it's safe, adequate, and proper for the proposed use. And there's a septic assessment dated May 23 that's in the material, and that assessment noted that the distribution box is old and deteriorated. This is not consistent with the comments made by Jenkins Water and Sewer Repair in its July 26 invoice, that's also part of the documents, which said that the distribution box and header line looked to be in good condition. And I think that, well, there's conflict here. I would prefer to see the conflict resolved by the on-site soil examiner rather than by a vendor who's done the work. I'm not trying to cast any aspersions on Jenkins or anyone else, but the inconsistency is there, and I think it should be addressed. The application notes, and the speakers indicated it's only going to be rented to members. I think that's good. If that's not implicitly part of the approval here, because that's what the application says that they're seeking, I would like to see a condition that it be limited to members. Now, departing a bit from my critical comments, I'll say the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club has been, not been a bad neighbor. They've been a good neighbor. There have been no instances, which I'm aware, when renters of the cabinet, cabin have behaved inappropriately. And apart from my preceding comments, I don't have any objections to approval of the application. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I am somewhat familiar with the PATC. I grew up in Vienna. They've been on Park Street for many decades. I was also a member years ago when I was hiking a lot more and spending time on the Appalachian Trail. You need to be a PATC member to rent the majority of their cabins, so there is a bit more oversight of our guests than there may otherwise be with other short-term rental situations. I would suggest that most PATC members probably have a greater awareness of the importance of appropriate behavior in rural settings with regard to food, wildlife issues, so as to avoid wildlife becoming habituated to a food source. Concerns about that came up not long ago in regard to another special exception application. It is noted in the application that the property has been a PATC asset since 2014 and has been rented to members for quite some time as accommodating six people. The current description for this cabin on the web listing, and I did look at it again this morning, per, and per information that was provided in the special exception application notes, the sleeping for six, including a loft double bed, a double futon, and a double-deck bunk. However, it is a one-room cabin, and per our ordinance, if this special exception is approved, it can be rented to a maximum of two guests. So, that will be a change for the, what's a guest been going on for a while. For the number of rooms' guests, it appears the application was amended from some other number to now read one, if you look at page one. I would suggest there be conditions placed that require an update to the PATC web listing sooner rather than later, that note local ordinance and permitting requires a maximum of two guests, and the importance of strict adherence to that requirement if this, if this application is to be approved, and that any violation of it could result in the revocation of the special exception permit if it's granted. Often, with cabins that are attractive and you have repeat people, if renters in the past have been accustomed to having six people now, and it's a change to two, I think that, that needs to be clearly conveyed going forward. I would also point out that the special exception application requires both the name of the owner and the name of the applicant as part of the signatory conditions, and it states, and I quote, "If the applicant is acting on behalf of any group or person, or persons, or a legal entity, such as a corporation, partnership, LLC, or association, you must state the legal relationship that entitles, entitles the applicant to so act." I cannot read the signature of the person who signed the application. It is not printed below the signature. The owner's signature just notes PATC. On page one, both the name of the applicant and the owner note PATC. The email for both is the same, and it denotes cabin coordinator. It is unclear who is representing the PATC on the application and the authority that permits them to do so, and that should have been established and clarified on the application before this public hearing. I would also note that as a county, we should give some thought as to what actual documentation we should be requiring that substantiates the authority to act as an applicant if the person is not also the property owner. We have had instances in the past, and one very recently, where required submission of proof of legal authority and clear documentation of LLC ownership information would have been both appropriate and wise. Perhaps the planning commission can recommend to the board of supervisors that there needs to be some changes to our special exception process going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. If there's no one else wishing to speak on this tourist home application, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this tourist home application and turn to my fellow commissioners. Mr. Henry, I think this is in Hampton District, if you'd like to start.
Okay. How many members do y'all have total? How many total members?
About 8,700.
And is, does the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club only cover basically the Shenandoah National Forest, or they cover other state, federal parks?
We cover, we cover Virginia from Shenandoah National Park all the way up to Harpers Ferry, to west into the Lee District and the national forest. We cover the Appalachian Trail in Maryland, in West Virginia, and about the lower third of Pennsylvania. It's a total of about 1,100 miles of trail that we maintain.
Mr. Hendrick, would you mind to come up and use the microphone for the minutes? I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, in terms of the club, then, how do you all operate? What's your legal entity that, you said you work, you're a nonprofit, federal one, but do, how do you operate? Do y'all have bylaws? Is it, is it a nonprofit, is y'all incorporated? What's the entity that...
Yeah, we were, we were, we were incorporated in Washington, DC in 1927. That was later changed to be incorporated in, in the state of Virginia. We have formal bylaws. We have an executive committee. We have, like, we have a board of supervisors. We also, we also have every, every year a full audit. We also submit a nine, a 99. So, that's, that's where we operate. We have, we, we have monthly meetings.
Since you're a nonprofit, do y'all go all the way to the point of listing the real estate you all own as tax-exempt in the counties, or is it taxable here in the county?
No, it's tax exempt.
Okay. Right. The typical tenant, a renter, do they stay a weekend? Do they stay a week? What's your normal...
Generally, it's generally weekend rentals. Occasionally, they may, they may take a, a couple of days during the week. We do not, we do not rent beyond four days.
Yeah.
Never. And, and we don't, we don't allow repetitive rentals. We run into problems where you get, where you get people who are working in the area. They, they might rent for three or four days, then they, then they, then they come back the next week and do the exact same thing. We don't, we don't allow that.
What's the gap in between, period? So, you gotta be a month, two months if you, if you wanted to come back?
That's usually a month.
Okay. So, I guess, I understand the taxes being paid, but do y'all, have y'all been collecting county taxes or lodging taxes?
We pay, we pay the Virginia sales tax, and we also, we're also working with the tax people here in the county because they're gonna, they're gonna make us pay in arrears.
Okay.
And, and so, that's been, that's been worked.
Okay. And pretty much all the people that come to the cabin, they drive there? There's hikers on the Appalachian Trail that may stay there for two or three nights, or which, could somebody do that? If they're hiking the trail, stay there for a couple nights, make prior arrangements in advance?
Sure.
So, you got some people that actually do the trail, and other ones drive in with a car, both ways?
But most, most of them drive, yeah. You know, the, the, the trailer is gated, and it's, it's a quarter-mile mark, and so, they can, they can drive off. Most hikers generally don't, don't come off the trail and come all the way down there to, to rent the cabin. We, we maintain the, we maintain the overnight butts up in Shenandoah National Park. Those are owned by, by Shenandoah National Park. We, we actually maintain those for the, for the overnight hikers.
Yeah. Between rentals, I kind of understood from the presentation that people, when they check out, they go online and say what, what they found when they got there, how they left it. So, I kind of guess nobody maybe goes there between visits unless they have to?
That's right.
Right.
Unless we're gonna work, or unless Sue goes up to, to, um, check it, check it out.
Yes.
Maintain it, clean it up.
Right. It's a no-thrills cabin, really, right? Okay. Is there a list of emergency numbers in the cabin that if something goes on, that people know who to call and all that kind of stuff?
We have a binder.
Right.
It's posted on the wall, and it's in the binder.
Yeah. And you probably have far extended insurance and everything else here?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
And is this your signature on the applications?
No.
Whose signature is it?
It was the, it was not Hallowell. The, we have, we have a aid staffer who handles all of our cabins. And so, if you, when you go online and you rent the cabin, then the cabin coordinator prepares a packet which has all, all of the detailed information that a renter needs, the do's and the don'ts, send them a key. That's the cabin coordinator. He filled that out. What should have happened, I'll be honest with you, probably the, the president or the vice president should have, should, should have signed it. Yeah.
I think that that could be cured with the letter, just establishing the, the person that is responsible, like the president. If he could just amend the application with the letter that he understands this was submitted on behalf of the PATC, and he has reviewed the application and, and found it acceptable and is aware that the county's reviewing it, I think that there's a cure for that. And this has come up before, and usually just a, just a simple letter will cure any kind of concerns about who should be on the application and, and the kind of chain of command, for lack of a better word. That's great. Do you have a sense of what the average use of what, how many people would actually on average use the hour at one time?
This is, and, and, when you look at all, all of the cabins that we have in all of the, all of the counties, this is probably a low end, around 30% of the time. We have, we have others that are upwards of 85.
Yeah. I tried to get one today.
This, this is not average.
And how much a night do you get for that place? Or is it varied depending on season?
Well, if, yeah, we get, we get more on the only weekend because that's...
The ballpark, the swag, I mean.
Yeah. No, exactly. We, we rent for, for 50 bucks a night and, and, and 70 bucks on the weekends. And, and we, we, we really try to keep the price down. I'll, I'll be honest with you. We, we really want to have kids, families to come out and rent these, these, these things. The kids, the kids love it. You know, this, this thing has got a whole big front porch, green in. The kids hike, they take the mattress off the bunks, they go out and sleep out there. It's like camping out. The kids, the kids love it. So, we keep, we keep the price down.
So, y'all, like, I looked ideal for kids. I went up there. The, what I was wondering about is if you have a family, what, if you, what's the typical family size for people that have rented it? What I'm curious about is if you have three kids, are we making this too restrictive?
Well, the, it says two adults with accompanying children. So, now, I guess you could have three, three kids.
So, in the past, I mean, there's, there's sleeping for six.
Yeah.
Two of those are narrow bumps. And our impression is that when we look at the logbook, people fill out a journal, and often it's two parents and two or three kids, or it's two couples come. Rarely is it six people, but sometimes it is. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does. I would just...
So, rough estimate, and I'm not the tax man, that's down, down the way there, but I figure roughly 100 days a year it's rented.
I'm sorry.
I mean, 30%. If we go on 50 bucks a night, so... If we go on 50 bucks a night, so, and you've been renting since 2014, so 10 years worth?
Yeah, off and on. There were some, some towns who actually take it out, out of the system to do, to do maintenance and those types of things.
But they, the, the county and the, the board hasn't come to a careers agreement or whatever yet?
Not yet. I mean, some, some, some counties, we've gone through this with something like 14 counties and some of the counties say, we're not, we're not gonna charge you occupancy tax. And, and the reason for it is, in their mind, we do an awful lot of work for, for the county. This is their, their rental only, you have to be club member and 501(c)(3), and we don't advertise.
Yeah, that, that was my other question, and I'll stop. But you said a club member rents it, so you're a club member. Could you rent for me if I'm not a club member and I walk around?
You are, you, you are supposed to be there with the other residents.
Right.
Now, obviously we can't, you know, but we, we've found that generally people are pretty honest about it.
You know, honestly, it looked like it was really well taken care of. I, I was impressed because it was a really good run. I thought you all did a good job.
Did you have anything to add, Tom?
I, I didn't really have concerns with this application. I think it's a remote location. I appreciate that you all have brought forward an application to align with the zoning ordinance. It's always encouraging when, when people are working with the county to, especially the commissioner of revenue on the finances and submitting an application. I know we do make special considerations for 501(c)(3)'s in some instances, so I can see where maybe you didn't realize you had to do this. So, I thought it was a good application though and I, you all are agreeable to the two adults and accompanying children. It sounds like that's the best way forward.
I, I guess that's pretty much the way, the way forward with, with you. I mean, obviously we'd like to, you know, four adults, you know, the price is the same.
Right.
But, you know, this is, it's the best way forward, I just will put it.
Well, it, it just would put us in a difficult position with other properties where one bedroom in one couple really is appropriate. You know, if we, if we set a precedent, we have to stick to it.
We have to.
So, but I think it's great and any chance people get to get out and enjoy nature and spend time with their family is a great thing, especially if they're coming to Rappahannock.
You bet.
Yes, sir.
I do think that we need to resolve the distribution market issue that we've got up.
Well, here's what, here's what happened on that, and you, you may be completely correct, but the, we had, we had the special guy came, came out, licensed guy, he, he looked at it, he opened it up, looked at both boxes, or two, two boxes, poked around on it and, and said it looks like it was, it was deteriorated. We had a licensed plumber came out, he opened everything up, fixed the septic, was, there was a dip in the line, fixed all that. He looked very, very hard at that. He said, I, I just don't think, I just don't think it needs to be fixed.
Tommy, can I ask a question? So, in, in, so reading here a minute ago, it said Mr. Jenkins came out and fixed it up. Was this a Rappahannock Jenkins or a Falkier Jenkins?
It's a Shunde Jenkins, but no, he doesn't live in, in Rappahannock.
Well, I'm taking then it was a Falkier Jenkins. And this Falkier Jenkins, we use him at least once or twice a month. Bilton, right. Yeah, that's him. Yeah. And he's a licensed repair person with the state of Virginia. So when he looks at it, it's the same as if a health department official looks at it. And he's by the book, does absolute, excellent work. And so whatever he says, I'm happy to put 100% faith in his work because I've seen his work for 20 years. So, it was, he, he did it, whatever he did, he did it right. Yeah.
I'll, I'll take your word, but I.
Well, your question there. What, two more questions for you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure you all have a liability policy?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And are you all closed down any parts of the year that you don't?
No, no, we're open, but obviously if we get, if we ever got any snow, that road would probably be closed, so we would, we would alert the renters.
Okay.
And, and.
Madam Chairman, whenever you're ready, I think I could prepare a motion.
That sounds great. Let's, let's hear it.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the application subject to two adults and the accompanying children of, of those two renters and that the applicant submit a letter in the next two weeks from the appropriate authority stating that he has reviewed the application that was submitted and supports and authenticizes everything that was submitted.
We'll do that.
Sounds good. We have a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Is there any further discussion? All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, special exception 240504, Diaz and Ruiz accessory dwelling unit. Michelle, what do you have for us on this?
Thank you. Special exception 240504. This use is pursuant to 17036A with additional standards of 1762G. Anthony Diaz and two Ruiz own property located at 177 Ridgeview Lane, which is 25 acres in size and its own agricultural. It's identified by tax map number 30FAP. Currently, their home is under construction at this site. They're proposing to construct an accessory dwelling unit for their sons to reside in. Their proposed accessory dwelling unit is 1,200 square feet in size with one bedroom and one bath and is within the 200 feet of the main home. B-Dot had no objection to this request as Ridgeview Lane is a private right of way. This use under the Rappahannock County Code also does not require any road standards to be met. I did take a look at the road and this area of the county was developed in this, back in the early 1970s. I also did not find any road maintenance agreement on record. The health department commented that when the owners are ready to begin construction, that they would need to obtain the proper permits from their office, whether they would be installing their own system for this ADU or connecting into the system for the main house, which is approved for four bedrooms. The applicants are present. Everybody have any questions at this time?
Do you have anything to add to the application or comments to the commissioner?
Madam Chairman, my name is Antonio Diaz. I'm the owner of the property with my wife, Sue Ruiz. We do have additional comments regarding this application. We are actually requesting this for, in view of our, happening on our later years when we get older, just planning the future ahead so we can have our, either our current child, Marcus, or our soon to be newborn child, Isabel, live in the, in that additional dwelling unit and maybe help us when we can no longer fend for ourselves. Additionally to that, I think I want to go ahead and, ahead and, go ahead and address any concerns that my neighbors have presented before this hearing and appease them and let them know that we don't have any intentions to subdivide the lot in any way. We would like to keep the lot the way it is. And that would be my comment.
Okay, thank you. You'll certainly have an opportunity later for comments, too. Thank you for that. And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on a special exception 240504, Diaz and Ruiz accessory dwelling unit. Anyone that wishes to speak on this matter, please come to the microphone and identify yourself, similarly by name and district in which you reside. And if you keep your comments for five minutes, we'll be offended.
My name is Carl Brotsman, Carl with a K, and I'm a resident on Ridgeview Lane. We're all the way in, that's a mile and a half down Ridgeview Lane from Long Mountain Road. Is it all right? I just have hard copies of a couple of photos. Is it all right to bring them?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We can, we can pass them down.
I noticed as, as well as the prior discussion that on our application it said, there was a question, have the neighbors been notified the block was checked? No. It's, it's fairly interesting. If you actually drive the road, you know, you see your notification is the red sign that, you know, zoning thing is in progress. We have some elderly residents and also we have non-resident owners. And I feel that it's important to, you know, is it, is it possible to ensure that those neighbors also have an opportunity to provide input? It, it seems like with the holiday and things like that, it's really only been out for a week or two. So I don't, I don't know if everyone knows or not. But it's of substantial importance to us because Ridgeview Lane is, you know, one way in, one way out. So that's the first thing. Comment about the application is it's the level of design work is another thing. The actual location of the septic isn't shown, the actual location of the well. And as Tony alluded to the notion of, and I do have a concern about the possibility for it being converted from, you know, household use to a rental unit. And it seems that somehow having a separate septic and a separate well would be an incentive to, you know, offering it as a rental unit. And rental units just, you know, it's a, it's a, I don't wanna say, I have to say transient community and it's really the luck of the draw what you're gonna get. Tony and Sue and Marco are wonderful neighbors. And with luck, you know, they'll, they'll long outlive us in the neighborhood and that would be truly wonderful. But who knows what the future foretells? When you build a building out there, you have a building. So it's certainly in the card, the cards of what we're doing is actually, you know, increasing the zoning of Ridgeview Lane, which is one dwelling unit for 25 acres, two high density, two dwelling units per one acre. So that's an observation, you know, just, it's the, you know, we're uncomfortable with the notion that our neighborhood is going to become more transient. And that's not the way the Browning tract was subdivided in the 70s. And I really can't speak about what actually happened back there, but the property maps are pretty detailed. It was all surveyed, I think, as a variety of units and there are a lot of them O letters worth of units. So the, the complete entourage of plats, of properties have not been developed. You know, so when you're going to think about what's the density of Ridgeview Lane, mile and a half off of Long Mountain Road, what's it going to look like in five years or 10 years? You know, who knows? Can't, can't make that prediction. I need to say that Ridgeview Lane now for fire and EMS response is really a challenge. You know, the water supplies are limited with ponds that are back there. For any of you that are familiar with fire operations, it's really undesirable to pump out a standing water out of ponds and things like that. And there's, there's no opportunity to get back to Washington, for instance, and get water. It's just no turnaround opportunities, no opportunities to turn tankers around and it's one way. The road is bad. And that's, that's an argument just against the notion of approving ADU in general. You know, it's the increase in the number of people that are down the road and the access is very limited. So that was an argument against the ADU in general. The, the first topic and the reason that I fast out the photos, the plat shows that there is, the access to the accessory dwelling unit is shown, right? And that's the section of comprehensive plan 17062-G. No ADU shall utilize a separate entrance to the property unless such entrance is already in existence. So, so the photos there show what the, what the proposed area looked like. And that's December 7th of 23 is, you know, the long, the long distance photo up in the top left is December 7th, 23. And the rectangular sort of sign there, that's the tree farm sign. So the next two things are zoom on the house just to show the level of construction and then a close up of the tree farm sign. And you can really see that at that time, you know, it's arguable whether there was an entrance road there or not. Tony says there was. I'm really skeptical. If you go at the same vantage point now, those are the pictures at the bottom of it, you know, it shows that a, an entrance has been constructed and gravled over and you can see it from two sort of directions. Observe as well that the road there takes a 90-degree sharp turn. I'm surprised that B-Dot had no, no, you know, if they actually were reporting on the viewscape up at the entrance to the existing entrance or whether they were reporting on the, you know, the view that was at the tone, the turn for the proposed accessory dwelling unit. I, I, you know, the, the proposed access is down a hill onto a curve on a one-laid road. That's an argument against the notion of accepting the, the design with a separate access. And it seems to be prohibited in the comprehensive plan. The last photo there, it's, it's another vantage from the past. That's 2023 of, July of 2023, when we had Miss Utility out to tell us where the phone lines were. And that shows the tree sign is barely visible next to the double tree to the upper left corner. You know, so you can look at that and say, is that, was that an existing entrance or isn't it? It's hard to sell, tell. You can also see that there's a bulldozer, a caterpillar tractor in the background so they can see the, you know, the level of clearing and things like that. That was there at the time. So, you know, the ADU in, in general, and it's really very difficult. They're wonderful neighbors, you know, and we entirely support the, you know, you know, Marco forever, you know, the growing family and things like that. However, we're very concerned about increasing, you know, just having a, you know, a rental unit is an opportunity to expand the population on Ridgeview Lane, which just wasn't designed, you know, to be accessible sort of thing. And I don't know what the Browning tract subdivision said as far as rights of way. I believe it's 50 foot. You know, but that's, that's craziness. And you can see some of the original, you know, the vestiges of the original grating and things like that that look like 50 feet wide. It's nowhere near that now, you know, and there's some.
Mr. Brotsman, I hate to interrupt you.
Yes, you know, Rappahannock. But that's a consideration. I mean, the deal is if you buy into the ADU, increasing the, you know, the number of people that are on that lane. And then you also recognize that perhaps the additional properties are going to be developed. You're gonna be adding another 10 more, you know, potentially, you know, who can predict the future? But the deal is, is for fire rescue, if there's not also a thought about, you know, is the, can the county come in and say, you know, we need to really think about emergency services with respect to accessing these more remote properties?
I have to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, you know, so the last thing was the, the reference and the thing about the comprehensive plan, item seven, which is increasing economic growth and stuff like that. And I really think the ones that are applicable are few, are four, right? Which is the promote growth in areas that are planned for growth. And the other one is just the scenic preservation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
Madam Chairman, I can pull that.
So you'll, you'll have an opportunity to speak after the public hearing is open. So sorry, this is, this is an opportunity for the public to speak. You're the applicant.
My name is Karen Hunt. I live in Jackson District. This application is very problematic and context is relevant here. I have provided a handout to the planning commission for reference. The property was purchased on June 7th of 2021. It's raw land that aerial photographs depict as a densely treed lot. A building permit for a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath dwelling was issued on November 17th of 2022. That dwelling is still under construction. No occupancy permit has been issued. Our ordinance clearly defines an accessory use as one that is clearly subordinate to, found in association with, and serving a principal use. An ADU is an accessory thereto a principal residence. An ADU is an accessory thereto a principal residence. On just that point alone, this application appears to put the cart before the horse. And that was before the comments I heard here that this is for future use where they have very young children, so that's pretty far in the future. Additionally, there are also what are noted, two driveways shown on the hand-drawn plan submitted with the application. There is no scale provided. See attachment A. An aerial photograph of the primary dwelling from earlier in the construction process clearly shows one driveway access to the residence under construction, but not the second one pictured on the hand-drawn plat. See attachment two. What is currently being depicted as a second driveway is actually a short ingress that extends roughly 20 to 30 feet into the parcel and then abruptly stops. It appears to have been recently gravelled. See attachment C. The VDOT letter includes as part of this special exception package notes the property has an existing private entrance, singular. It makes no mention of an additional entrance. Section 170-62G states, no ADU shall utilize a separate entrance to the property unless such entrance is already in existence. See attachment D for the planning commission's convenience. A review of health department records indicates that the intent of the applicants from the start was for four bedrooms total between two separate dwellings in some kind of configuration with one shared driveway. See attachment E. Please note that for attachment E, the same date of the construction drawing is May 7 of 2021, the same date that the property was purchased. Please also note the location of the septic drain field in attachment E. A review of health department records indicate clearly that the septic dispersal area must be protected from vehicular traffic as noted in a May 27 of 2021 health department OSB construction permit. The approved location of the septic lines, tank, and drain field to the left of the current construction site likely complicate the ability of shared driveway access for any proposed separate structure located to the left. I wonder if perhaps this explains a second ingress? And I haven't even mentioned the issues with Ridgeview Lane as a shared narrow private road and the adverse impacts on neighboring properties. Safety issues were just raised by a resident. This application raises a bunch of questions and issues. Should we, as a county, even be considering a special exception for what our ordinance clearly defines as being subordinate to the primary use when the primary use is incomplete? Was there a driveway in existence when this property was purchased in May of 2021? When was the driveway for the primary dwelling still under construction installed? When was the short second ingress installed? I have a second access point to my front field that is approximately 18 to 20 feet before it abruptly stops at my field gate. Would this be considered a driveway for the purposes of an ADU in my front field? My driveway is decidedly different than my field access point. I would also point out, in the special exception package, special exception application package on page 13 of their application, on the ADU site plan title page noted project description, it appears that some other number of bedrooms was originally listed, and then the number one has been handwritten over top. There is a game room, an office, and a full bath in addition to a living room noted on the first floor plan. The applicant has written on page 4A of their application, one bedroom, two rooms, two baths. I find it interesting that the living room is not included in their room count. The more research I do, the more concerns I have, and the more I question what the original tent was when the applicant's purchased this property. It bears repeating that a special exception is just that. It is special, and it is an exception, and an ADU is not a byright use. The special exception provision for an ADU was not intended to be used as an end run around our ordinance and zoning density requirements that have been in place for nearly 30 years. This is a recent 25-acre raw land purchase with construction that is ongoing and incomplete. I also question the ongoing use of a travel trailer and an exterior porta potty that appear to be used, being used as living quarters on the site. Our ordinance defines a travel trailer and states it shall not be deemed a mobile home. 170-70B12A states such equipment shall not be used for living, sleeping, or other occupancy when parked or stored on a residential lot or in any other location not approved for such use. And B12B states such equipment six feet or more in average height not parked or stored in a garage, car park, or other structure, one, shall not be located in any required front or side yard. 170-41 governs our temporary mobile home permit process, but again, a travel trailer is not eligible as a mobile home. I strongly suggest this application, at the very least, is premature. When location, timelines, behavior, impacts, and precedent are considered, I question if this is appropriate in any context here. If approved, this would set a dangerous precedent that our ordinance and density requirements are not to be respected or upheld and can be circumvented through the special exception process. Please think about that. In light of all this, I urge the planning commission to recommend denial of this application. And also note, there is a typo in the staff report text that lists 26.227 acres that needs to be corrected going forward. Thank you.
Karen, anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Yes, Mr. Kohler.
Rick Kohler, Jackson District. Number of years ago, I was involved in selling the property across the road, so I do have some familiarity with that specific location. Where the potential driveway is for the ADU comes off that little curve, a little bit of an uphill slant, it's got some number three gravels there, about 30 feet in. This is memory, but I cannot remember any entrance being there in the past. The entrance up at the other end, I'm not familiar with, so I couldn't speak as well to that. But I just can't remember an entry being along that section of the road. It was a forest of pines. It was just a pine, pine forest tree farm. So, and I guess the other thing I would be concerned about would be setting a precedent for opening another driveway into a property, which could have some future potential implications for division or a different use than just a family situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing on the D S and Ruiz accessory dwelling unit. You had some information to add, sir?
I just want, another question, Chairman, I just wanted to clarify regarding the driveway that was the only existing vehicular access before we bought that property, and even before it was cleared. You could actually, it was the only way you could get in access with a car or a vehicle through there. And there was a clearly demarcated pathway where cars had been going in and out the whole time in there. And in the forested area, there was a rather large clearing where there were no existing trees in there in that area already. So somebody was actually utilizing that to go in and out and turning around in there the whole time. So that's the only comment I want to make on that.
This is your opportunity to speak. Anything you'd like to add, or commissioners may have questions for you?
Madame Chairman, Smith, and the entire committee, I first wanted to thank Ms. Summer for the tremendous amount of work, and also the commission, all of you, to be able to be tonight, because this is not, it's a hard work. Second, we came here before, during, in the beginning of the pandemic, to actually, for my husband and I, to actually settle and retire. We found in love with Rappahannock because of the value and the tremendous amount of restriction on land and value about those items. For us, it was very important. I am from a family, from farmers, and we actually was, were impacted by so many developments in our community. And we appreciate this county for that. I want to address some of the comments from previously. My husband and I are thinking to have this auxiliary dwelling for our son. He's 24 years old. And one of the things that I grew up as a family is having the family unified altogether, which we lost that. We, now we have our children going to another state and kind of disconnected from the family, nucleus of a family. We value to get together and grow together. And back in the day, it was like that. And we want to have and preserve that in the county, because we think that is the way we should be as a family. We just put some, during the pandemic, we started the process. And if you all remember during the pandemic, there were no contractors available. It was so difficult for us to actually go ahead and find a contractor that actually met our expectation for this project that we are in. And we just took it ourselves and actually go over the process to make that happen. And with the amazing help for the building office to help us navigate. So that is the reason for the delay. It's, sometimes it's easy to say, oh, I want a contractor in a 12-month, maybe less than that, get that done. We just want to be also part of the construction and going over that. And that is from my husband's side and my side, we all built the house in the past when I was in a foreign altogether. So that's the, that's the reason of the delay. Also, we have some materials delayed because of the pandemic, and we are navigating into that stress right now. When we think, when we thought about this auxiliary dwelling, we didn't, we thought that was kind of like, okay, maybe we can make it and actually have him allocated in the house sooner than later. And, and right now, I don't think it's impossible to have it right away when we put the auxiliary dwelling, but for sure, we want to have like in between a year and a half, two years to actually start that process with the county, with the building office. We have a portable toilet, which is required by our building office for all the subcontractors that we have. We actually make sure it's well, well-maintained, because we want to make sure they get proper going to the bathroom. And we, we have it there serviced by a company. And also, we decided to actually be on-site because we are managing the project. And we both work, and at the same time, we're doing this. And it's quite impossible to actually have two different tasks, work full-time, and actually have people coming and coordinating and all that stuff. It was not, by no means was an intention to put a trailer for nothing. It's just for the purpose of the, believe me, it's very difficult and some compromises. But we made the commitment to actually build and get that done from a project standpoint. And I believe they're all comments.
Okay. And you're welcome to speak. You may find it more productive to field questions from the commissioners.
Okay.
But you're welcome to conclude your comments.
Okay, thank you. I have to sit down.
Please do. It would be a first if you went into, well, first for me, I don't know if this ever happened before.
I just want to address, this has been a particularly difficult project. We're not builders, we're building it, but this is not a conventional build. We're actually building a straw bale home, which has been really difficult to find the appropriate labor to actually complete the project. Just wanted to add that.
Do I have a question, which is, is your son actually ready to move into a dwelling?
He needs to probably find a rental to be able to wait until we're finished. But he was working in a county before as car, as a reason he knows, as an electrician. And he also fell in love with a county, too. As a young man, it's very rare to find that. So he wants to preserve that as well, and perhaps get growing in the county.
Thank you.
It's an embarrassment of riches for you this evening, I would like to start.
I love it. All these people concentrating in Hampton District. It's a lovely place to live and do things. I'm glad that you mentioned that your son was 24 years old, so there's a clear, he's a mature young gentleman and looking to establish his life. It's very difficult in Rappahannock County for young people to find a way out here, to live here and to work here. So anytime that, you know, that can be done, it's wonderful. And I think in terms of long-term solution to the housing problem in Rappahannock County, it's going to be these accessory dwelling units. Now, having said that, you know, I went out there Sunday for the first time. I've been on that road numerous times in the last 30, 40 years, and I have a friend that lives before their house, but I never, hadn't been on the backside there probably for 10 or 15 years. And when I came out, came up to where I could see his house, he's building a very modest house for himself and his wife. I mean, I was, you know, you see the white paper, and at first you think, oh, this is a 2,500, 3,000 square foot house. But then when you look at it, you realize it's a very simple house in terms of square footage design. And if he wanted to, he could have done a breezeway and attached this accessory unit to, by the breezeway, and he wouldn't be here tonight. So, so that could have been done with no permit, and nobody could have said a word about it. However, when you look at the diagram he's done here, it seems very logical that, you know, it's picked a correct location. And it's been comments bety that there's a conspiracy going on here to violate the county and circumvent the ordinance and do every, all these other vile things to the county. But I think when he submitted his application to the health department, he was forthright and say, hey, you know, I'm going to build a accessory unit, a cottage or whatever, and it may be another bedroom, it may hook into the sewer. So I think if anything, it's not a conspiracy. I think it was simply honest disclosure on his part that he had future plans for the property. And you notice there is that Christmas tree sign, not Christmas tree, but a tree farm sign on the property. And I can remember back years ago, I did a construction appraisal in there and did inspections on the property. So I went in it quite a few times. As I recall, there was some degree of maintenance going on at this property where the owner was mowing something, and he mentioned that there was a trail in, it was an open area, maybe to park in or a camp area or whatever. And so I think this property had a little bit more of a high degree of maintenance than if it was simply a wooded track. So that may well explain, you know, the dirt entry, entrance down there. And the ordinance we have doesn't say, you know, it's got to be gravelled, it's got to be a culvert, it's got to be, you know, a radius. It just simply says entrance. It doesn't, it could be a dirt entrance. And comments have been made, too, tonight by the public, kind of in error, that VDOT commented on this particular site. This is not a state road. VDOT did not comment on this particular property. They just simply commented on that, you know, they looked at the entrance where it comes onto Long Mountain. They have no jurisdiction on this private road. So VDOT did nothing, did not look at this property. So any comments by VDOT, which were basically a mile away almost, where it connects into Long Mountain. So don't misstrew that comments from VDOT were directly, particularly at this site, based upon a site inspection by them, because that's a misrepresentation. So that is incorrect. And another thing here, you can argue this entrance all night. And another thing here, you can argue this entrance all night long, but our ordinance doesn't say how long it has to be in. They could have put it in two hours before the application and then it's an existing entry. It could have been there as dirt entrance for ten years and it's on a private road. We have no jurisdiction over really entrances on a private road. So whatever they've done, they've done correctly and right. And uh, uh, the only thing I would comment on is that their existing house that they're building has tieback on it, whatever the other, somebody else made it manufactured, but they have tieback on it that's blown loose. And it's a little bit uh, uh, not attractive and they understand that they're building themselves. So my only comment would be that uh, I would be looking down later on, right after everybody speaks. He was talking about a motion incorporating that uh, they couldn't start the accessory dwelling unit until they finished their primary dwelling unit now and, and got a permit for occupancy and then moved on to the construction of the second unit. And one more thing here, nineteen eighties into nineteen nineties, there was a lot of do-it-yourself projects in Rappahannock County. A lot of do-it-yourself projects. People came out here, built houses on a shoestring, generated the money. I built my house by myself and it took me three years to do it. Finally, my wife fired me at Thanksgiving and she got the house done by Christmas and she took it over. So that's a true story. So now it seems to be a lot more money in the county, a lot more builders, a lot more million dollar houses. So people are not doing like this. So it's perfectly okay, I think, for you to build your own house and take your time to do it. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
You know, I, I wanted to follow up on that, what else had, uh, just in terms of if you have a family in Rappahannock County and you have, one of them is a young son, you want to provide a place for them to live, the only, you know, one of the few ways you can do it is by having an ADU. And I also felt like maybe you'd want to finish the main house before, I couldn't figure out whether I just thought the ADU request was too premature period. Uh, because the, the house doesn't look like it's ready to be moved into by any means. And I think my understanding of this ordinance is that there should be an existing structure um, before there's an ADU as a supplemental structure. And then the other thing in, in going up to that property, the driveway, I, it looked to me like it had been used to clear, you know, that was the means for clearing out all the trees and that there probably wasn't another entrance other than that one. That you, you guys probably put the new entrance in, right?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Approximately, how long or how far do you think you have to go to complete it? I'm, I'm just a guess, just a guess.
We're probably about seventy-five percent of the way down.
And so, I mean, if everything went great, weather cooperated and you're coming into winter, but what are you looking at time-wise? I know things can change and.
I would say I know two, three months.
I'm so sorry to ask you to get up, but we really do like everything on, everyone on the recording. And I, I know you're in a tough shape. That does come off the, off the skin if you want to say something.
So another two to three months.
No, two, two to three months, yes.
I, I feel the same building the house, I did the same type of thing. But um, it's, it's, it's hard for me to get behind the ADU until the other one's done. Once it is, I, I, I mean, I understand, but until it's done.
I, I just want to be clear with the commissioner that I am in no position to start building another. I have enough of building right now with the current structures.
If you have any, and then again, things can change. If you have any anticipation of renting that or trying to apply for an Airbnb.
No.
And the reason I ask this, so this last month, we had a situation where somebody wanted an ADU for a parent or something. And um, after it was completed and it was granted, they sold it. And then the people who bought it, right away wanted a.
Yeah, we, we, me and my wife and my family are a little bit of, we, I consider us a little bit of hermits. So we wouldn't like to have any tenants. And we had a really bad tenant situation back home with another, with another situation. My wife was to make, wants to make a comment.
Can't you mind getting your wife the microphone? I'm sure it'll come off the stand, I know. We don't love us. No, please don't apologize.
So I, I want to comment on that one because we, we did this very meticulously. Um, and that's the reason we are not going into a separate septic in a separate well. And if it's, if a rental situation will probably was bought in the process, it was kind of like going over a separate septic in a separate well. Cause it will decrease the value anyway for having a separate unit. Uh, the, the reason it's all connected is, is remind that is, is an extension and is shared with, with us. That's the reason the permit is for four bedroom, uh, on the septic side and on the well. To make sure that it's a promise that for the county as well, there will not be a rent. And I know uh, your situation about Airbnbs and all that stuff is something that is very concerning as well. Cause you never know what is in your neighbor in, in the renting situation. Uh, it's not, it, it's, it's more negative than positive for the community.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
So uh, just to close out that last comment, it would require a separate permit application if you, if you were to change your mind about that renting, that making it an Airbnb. And then I think the road standards and some of the settings would, would kick in in a way that is not applicable to the current use. But I, I did want to ask, looking at some of these sketches, I, I wonder if the, it's not obvious from the scale of this, which I just explained, or septic permit. But is that, is there a chance that the driveway goes over that area? Uh, there's space between there, it's not to scale. Okay. Uh, I think, I think those are the only points. I guess I would just say that I, I tend to agree with Mr. Henry's assessment about this. Especially that this, it's almost a design feature that it's two separate units as opposed to some larger connected one. And you're, and I guess wasn't, the other thing, it wasn't quite obvious to me. Are you, is the plan to have it share a well and septic? Cause I thought some of the discussion earlier said you were still up in the air on that.
No, no, the, the, the septic and the well are approved already.
To be shared.
And highly health and environment and also big comments as well about capacity.
Gotcha.
So the, um, the unit, the accessory, um, accessory joint and then the hours as well.
Okay, thank you. I kind of misunderstood some of that earlier back and forth. I have no other comments. I think, I think some of the suggestions that have been made so far about conditions and things are appropriate.
Sounds good.
Yes, I have a couple of comments, you know. Same point that we're questioning their intent for the future. But their adjoining neighbors cannot give no guarantee that their property will not change in the future either. So I don't think it's fair for us to be a judge to question your intent of what you plan to do down the road. And I mean, it's welcome to, to the county and welcome to the same problem that the natives of this county have had for some years. But we, we are in a situation where the, by other means and other actions, our children and grandchildren are facing the same thing that you're dealing with, with your son and your future child. But we cannot afford, they cannot afford to live in the counties that they were born in. So I say, welcome to the county and I hope you're the best. I think you're doing a commendable thing to provide a future home for your son and your future child. To be with you as a family, to, as I heard you mention late, earlier, in your later years, you're going to need a caretaker. I know, I know that very well.
Good, Tony?
No, I answered my questions. Like I said, I am, and we can what if a thousand things and I don't want to go down that road. I'm just, I asked you if you had any, and, and anyone for that reason, because that does change a whole bunch of difference, uh, circumstances. If it were done, if the other house were completed, this wouldn't be an issue to a large degree. But since it's not done, I still have a, I, I don't see how I can put it forward to be perfectly honest. I don't know how I can jumble board with an ADU when the primary unit is not done yet.
So.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Please, uh, I think some of the neighbors and some of the email communications and some of the conversations between themselves uh, maybe created uh, some false information that it was, this was going to be a family division. In other words, the house is going to be cut off on, on two acres. And uh, a couple of things here, uh, the fact that they're going to use the same septic and, and well kind of prevents a possibility of any family division, number one. Number two, I don't think the ordinance uh, will apply to a family division in here because I think all the division rights have been used up. I think it's five, probably can have five rights. Uh, and if you look at this property with the number of lots that was created and subdivision was after nineteen sixty, uh, I think all the rights have been used up in here. So I, I don't think, I'm not Michelle or Gary, but I don't think of, it's a possibility that even a family division can be used in a subdivision. But having said that, if nobody else has any comments, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of this application subject uh, to the condition that the new uh, ADU unit, a permit cannot be applied for construction or construction started until uh, the existing house under construction, the main dwelling is completed and occupancy permit has been issued by the county for occupancy of that. And once that is done, then construction can begin on the ADU unit.
That's good. Did you get all that, Ms. Summers?
Uh huh.
All right, do we have a second?
I see.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post?
I have to, just, I have to post, just because.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
You can stay until the end or you can leave now.
Yes.
You got an option, believe it or not.
Go ahead and put up your feet. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good luck.
All right.
I, I, on the floor?
Takes us to our final agenda, item of the evening, special exception twenty-four oh six oh one. Bradley and Briggs, more than one accessory dwelling unit per tract of land. Or not accessory, more than one dwelling unit per tract of land. Uh, Ms. Summers?
Thank you. This is pursuant to RCC one seventy thirty-six A. Natalie Bradley and Chad Briggs have requested a special exception permit in order to construct a second full holder property located at thirty-one Sharp Brown Road. The property is approximately two hundred and five acres in size and serving both conservation and agricultural. They plan to construct a new home for themselves and use the existing home on site for family and friends when they are visiting. VDOT had no objections, objections to this request. The health department commented that a private soul scientist has designed a sewage disposal system and located a proposed well. When the owners are ready to begin construction, they'll just need to obtain the construction permit from their office. I will note that a question of rap regarding any division of this property and there's been one division since nineteen ninety. The applicants are present with their legal papers.
Thank you. Did y'all have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, just briefly. My name's Anna Ritter. I'm here on behalf of Natalie and Chad, who are here to answer any questions that we might have. Um, as Ms. Summers outlined, this is a two hundred and fifteen acre parcel, ten acres of that are in Madison County. Um, it's split zoned agriculture and conservation. The proposed new residence is in the agricultural area of the lot. Um, the existing residence on the property is a cottage where the applicants stay on a weekend basis. Um, the new proposed residence would be their primary residence. Um, and as Ms. Summers noted, friends and family would be visiting the cottage. There's no sort of rental situation or anything like that going on here. Um, there has been the one division since the nineteen sixties that was twenty-five acres split off. And um, the applicants specifically chose to go this route of the special exception application um, to permit the second residence rather than subdividing the property and just adding a residence, which would have circumvented this whole process because they really do value the integrity of the parcel. They came out to Rappahannock County, they valued this land, they've made a number of commitments to the natural habitat on the property, including planting native trees and developing a forestry plan. Um, so they really do value that and chose this route purposely for that. Um, I'd like to just highlight some of the requirements here real quickly. It's also in the application materials, depicted on the site plan. And I think there were some issues with readability. I do have printout copies. If anyone has issues with that, they're a little clearer. Um, the residence is three hundred and sixty feet away from the south property line, five hundred and eighty-two from the east boundary. Um, again, there's no subdivision uh, um, on the application at issue here. Um, it's served by an existing private driveway from which a smaller driveway offshoot will be constructed and that connects to a fifty-foot ingress egress, ingress egress easement, um, which connects with some of the other properties. Um, electric service is going to be extended from an existing pole. Um, the well site or proposed well site, proposed septic and drainage are also on that same site map. Um, there's no expected traffic impact or increased use of the driveway or easement. Again, uh, the applicants already stay at this property on a regular basis, um, which is the typical visiting of friends and family, um, that you'd expect any other property or family having. There's no historic features on the property, so there's no expected impact of those as well. Um, and again, this is, the applicants have chosen to pursue this low density use, which is in line with the comprehensive plan. Um, and again, the applicants are present to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Um, that will take us to then the public hearing on special exception. The Bradley and Briggs were the one dwelling per, one dwelling unit per tract of land. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please come to the microphone and address your comments to the commission uh, as in previous public hearings this evening.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I find this application troubling. The proposed new three thousand six hundred and fifty square foot resident dwelling plus a two-car garage and an ag shed is to be a permanent use while retaining the existing house on the same parcel to avoid a subdivision. The existing dwelling on the property has a kitchen, which per the staff report, the applicants intend to retain. They're referring to it as a guest cottage, but my understanding is that the retention of an existing kitchen excludes it qualifying as such. Um, the application notes a new proposed well, septic and drain field as noted on the plan. I cannot see the level of detail on the reduced size site plan contained in the application. I went to zoning uh, some weeks back to see a full-size site plan, which was not available at the time. Just today, I inquired about. Just today, I inquired about the greater detail on the site plan and learned of additional material detailing the location of the existing dwelling to the proposed one. And I was shocked to see that they are not in any way close in proximity to each other, which is what I thought this was all about. Of great significance, the application notes, and I quote, "The proposed residence does not include any subdivision of the lot, and so does not affect any subdivision rights of neighboring properties." So what neighboring properties would this affect? They have two hundred and fifteen acres in two parcels, ten acres in Madison and another two hundred and five in Rappahannock. I don't see the justification to support this request when they have the acreage. They've made their statement about why they don't want to subdivide, that they value that being contiguous. Again, I'll just note that the application notes, this is to be a permanent use. There is already a deeded fifty-foot right-of-way easement recorded in the deed. This could potentially future subdivision. At the risk of being a broken record here, special exception is just that. It's special in its exception. It's not a by right use. And as a county, we have a duty and a responsibility to consider the future impacts of a proposed use and to address those impacts where we consider if a special exception merits consideration. This appears to me to not be in accordance with the intent of our ordinance and subdivision requirements. And I'm concerned that if this is allowed, it establishes a precedent for people to circumvent our density and subdivision requirements. So if they want to build a new home, that's fine. What isn't fine is to ask for a special exception to retain additional density subdivision rights later down the road. I think our special exception process should be reserved for extenuating circumstances that can be substantiated, documented, supported, and then fully vetted by evidence that justifies why they're being sought. If applicants are motivated, as they contend in the application, that they want to build a new residence that will be their primary residence, and then they should be required to either subdivide the parcel within the parameters of our ordinance, or they could, this could be subject to a condition that will be deeded and run with the land, that in exchange for that, they will give up a subdivision right, and they can keep the property contiguous. But to ask that they essentially say, oh, our intent is not to subdivide this, and so therefore you should grant us the exception, and then later down the road, where might we be? So if, if they're just gonna use the existing home that's there with the kitchen, solely for visiting friends and family, that, that's fine. Maybe we should require a condition that they not apply for a special exception use for that somewhere down the road. I, I really feel that if this is approved, it's gonna open the door to more of the same. So I either urge the planning commission to recommend denial or to consider how you can place a condition on this, where if they really don't want to go through a subdivision and keep everything contiguous, then record it in a deed book. There is, there is not an identical example, but a very similar example that I've been looking at with a property that is now for sale on Old Hollow Road. And it is a bit of a mess, because it's been through one development, a subsequent owner, Airbnb. The ag building has been converted into essentially what is residential use. The listing agent has been contacted that they need to change the listing, you know, but it's already there. And one of the things I noticed in that is when that was subdivided in nineteen seventy-four into two skinny twelve-acre parcels A and B, it is recorded in the deed book that there, that those parcels can no longer be subdivided, that there's only to be one primary residence per parcel, and only one accessory, you know, ag, like an ag building, not an accessory dwelling unit. And so I think we need to think about this situation and how we might create a condition that will run with the land, so it won't be lost, where we're not giving someone additional subdivision rights somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else wishing to speak? If there's no one else wishing to speak on this application, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for Bradley and Briggs, more than one dwelling per tract of land, dwelling unit per tract of land. Mr. Sisk, this is in Piedmont District. Would you like to go first?
We all start. I looked at this, your presentation, obviously, it's got a heavy problem, reading a lot of it, except for a little bit of fine print. Just to be clear, what, what exactly is the reason you didn't want to do two separate parcels?
I, I see.
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I grew up in Frederick County, Maryland. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Frederick County, Maryland. In my mind, subdivision is a bad word. I grew up there in the early eighties and saw that place subdivided to bits and pieces, right? The city of Frederick is beautiful, but it just got picked apart. And it may just be an overly simplistic way of looking at it. Subdividing, to me, is something I, we just didn't want to do. Having that whole property ourselves without lines through it just felt like the, maybe not the path of least resistance, now that I'm looking at this scenario, but it seemed like the right thing to do.
All right, then, then I'll ask the question that was brought up. Would you be willing to give up that subdivision right? Would you, I mean, I don't wanna, if you're not.
Yeah, sure. I don't see why not, yeah.
Answer is no question.
Ms. Ritter, did you have anything?
No, that was basically my, I've been trying to figure out why you wanted to do it this way when you could just bypass this whole.
Oh, this was an ADEU?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, we have the two tax parcels, just adding more to that. It seems to be a lot more paperwork than we did last once.
Yeah.
Mr. Ratten?
No, it sounds like to me, if he's willing to give up those future subdividing rights, he, he really does hate the word of subdivision, though.
Yes, sir.
So I would commend you for that.
Well, it does put me in the mind of, of large properties that exist in the county today that have multiple dwelling units on them, and that was the way that people lived. They had to have multiple dwelling units on a large parcel, because it took that many people to do the work. I did have some folks, neighbors, ask about building materials and the color of the structure. And I looked at it, and reading your description and background, I kind of thought browns, earth tones, something to blend with the scenery. But I realized I'm looking at a black and white sketch, so it could be pink with purple polka dots, for all I know, and I should probably get clarification on that. And also, Mr. Kohler's here this evening from the Environmental Council, so I would be, our LEP, so I would be remiss if I did not ask about downward shielded lighting as well, that if you're building, is it your intention to, to use that kind of a scheme and, and use the downward shielded lighting as well?
I'll start with the first question. I think it was the color of the roof, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're planning a darker colored metal roof, yeah, so probably black or like a dark greenish-black. Yeah, that was one question we saw.
Good.
And the, could maybe downward shielded lighting, could somebody explain?
Kind of like when you drive by Blue Rock, it's kind of a shadow over the, instead of glaring lights that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, one thing I'll say, I mean, I think, if I understand where this might be going, I think we're, one of the reasons we love this place so much, and have since we purchased the property in two thousand twenty-one. I mean, this is one of the places, one of the few places we've been able to go where you can see the night sky the way you can. And so, you know, we very much want to be involved with, with, as much as we can, understanding that, so using the right lights. You know, we anticipate for the next however many years you want to add up for what we're gonna be here, being able to do that. So if it's downward shielding lights, I won't pretend to know exactly what that is, but our, our goal is to make sure that that night sky is preserved the way that it is, that we have it now. So we'll do whatever it takes to do that.
It does really help with the, you know, the light noise, or however you want to think about it. And sometimes I'm up on the drive at night for different things, and I look over to Page County, and it's very bright over there. And I look over to Rappahannock, and it's nice and dark. I think, wow, we really, we really are doing something right by encouraging that. It's more of a carrot than a stick in terms of the way we talk to people about dark skies programs and downward shielded lighting. But it's important, and I, I have a feeling that if you haven't already gotten questions from neighbors, you probably would about that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to address that as well.
I think motion detecting lights, using better use of, was it yellow lights we've been reading about? So there's all, there's, I think, a handful of things that we've been reading about.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Aren't those standards specified? Aren't those standards, aren't the dark sky standards written somewhere?
Not presidential.
Not, oh, but they're, but, but you can look at them, and they're in, they're in there somewhere.
They're in there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, I think, what are they called? Dark sky?
Compliant.
Compliant lighting.
RLEB has people that can help you find ice rooms, so you're not just looking at clothes or something.
Okay.
Mr. Kohler is the president of the Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection, which is a wonderful resource for people that are interested in, in that kind of thing.
I'm just trying to also anticipate how we might articulate this in the form of a condition or a motion, and I, maybe it would be helpful to find what we're referencing, assuming that ultimately is the pleasure. But in any event, you've, you've addressed, and I think, again, I think this question of the division right, I don't think they, my view is they shouldn't have to give up any, all division rights, but they shouldn't get an extra division right for, by virtue of having a property on the parcel. I would like, I could not quite figure out, and I saw you just had a better version of the map. I drove up there, and I couldn't figure out which is the current existing house. Could, could, maybe on this, could you kind of orient?
Yeah, so if you, if you go from, from, yep, just go straight, straight to the, straight to the top of the screen. Right there, that's the existing house, yeah.
Way out there in the woods?
Yes.
It's up in the valley.
Yeah, it's in the little valley there, yeah.
So where, so.
I mean, that's a, yeah, which is scroll back down.
And if you scroll back down, that little purple spot there is approximately where the house is going to be.
That's Nethers Road.
That's Nethers Road, and, yeah.
That's Nethers Road, and where is that driveway coming in? Over to the right?
I don't want that.
Yep, all the way over to the right of the screen. Right there, yeah, that's the driveway that comes in. That's where our property begins when the heat comes in.
Which door, which door is the donkey behind? Um, that's an older show. Okay, I, I, so I didn't get anywhere close to the existing house.
It's about a mile and a half.
Yeah, I gave up. I gave up way before then, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All I know is whoever makes the hay in that field is gonna be upset.
Well, we have, it's Mr. Lee Cothers, it's, the cows take the hay. They'll continue to take the hay, just, just whip it an acre or two less, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have any other questions.
You know, I'm utterly amazed tonight at this. We have always advocated trying to hold parcels together.
Yes, sir.
And now we're penalizing this person because they want to hold it together, but we're gonna take away a division right, so basically penalize them for holding it together. And here they got a property that's clearly in agricultural use. They got a house that doesn't match the property. The house is eleven hundred, twelve hundred, twelve feet, hundred and fifty years old at the very back end. That would work nice for a tenant house with this much land, probably not living there full town right now. Probably is gonna need somebody to live there, to mow the grass and do things. And if you do any cattle or anything, to look after that. So it's a wonderful proposal to have a viable agricultural activity here, and we're gonna penalize them and take away a division right, because he's gonna build a house? I mean, this is crazy. I mean, this is, I mean, he's got, if I was gonna, if I wanted to, if we're talking about circumventing the ordinance, here's what I would do by the ordinance. I would take your house site, and I would subdivide a two-acre lot. And I would build my house on that two-acre lot, so that I could go get a conventional loan, if I want one, and not have to deal with some type of jumbo whatever. Do a two-acre lot, and put my house there on the two-acre lot, and it would be past the zone in density and flash. No review here, no nothing.
But they would lose the subdivision right.
They, well, they would, they have one.
Right.
Right. But then if they, if they ever went and got an easement put on the property, they could get rewarded for that division right, because they would have seven or eight left, plus that one.
Well, that's why, to me, it's maybe not in the form of a division right, but I think the point is to make both dwellings contribute to the density consideration.
Yes.
So if you want to do that, another thing, I wouldn't give up a division right. That's vital. This house, it lay in the back, if you take out the kitchen, it's not a dwelling anymore. It's a studio or whatever else you want to call it.
Guest house.
Guest house. Huh?
Guest house.
And it's not, it's not, it doesn't count, right? You take out the kitchen, you take out the kitchen, you don't lose a division right. So I wouldn't lose a division right. I wouldn't do that. You know, I think it's perfectly fine, the distance, and the house is modest, and everything is more of a conventional property by everything you're doing. I, I think this is terrible to give up division right. I'm, I'm just shocked that this thing went this way tonight, because I don't think you're trying to circumvent anything. I think it's just common sense. If somebody buys a piece of land and pays the kind of money you paid for it, you know, they're gonna build a house, you've got the property in land use. Somebody's pulling cattle, agriculture on the property, this is just very normal.
Well, and I have to say, I appreciate how forthcoming the applicant was. And we have, we do have an issue with a, a building that was permitted as an agricultural building. That is, turns out, you know, that's kind of a question mark. I can't say it's not.
What's an agricultural building?
That one out on Old Hollow, it's now for sale, and it's, they've got it listed in the listing as residential space. That one that was permitted as an equestrian center. So what I'm saying is people, people, some people are willing to blur the lines, and I appreciate that this applicant was very forthcoming. And probably you could build a barn on this, in this area, make it huge, make it look like whatever you wanted it to look like. And it would be much more objectionable to the neighbors than your beautiful new home, which the county will realize tax dollars on, which would be an asset to the parcel. So I have to say, that is one of the reasons I did come around to it, too, because there are a lot of things you could do by right that, that we would have, that we would have no say on. And, and this is, I think, a, a good way forward.
What's a good way forward? Give up division right?
No, no, I would say making a recommendation on this. And I have to say, in light of the size of the parcel, I'm not particularly concerned about the division rights. I have to, I'm agreeing with you, Alex.
But what about the density restriction? Because you can take this example of, and, you know, obviously, we would get, they'd have to come in.
What did we do on Holland Road? We did something on Holland Road.
Madam Chair.
Didn't we that was this?
Madam Chair, may I, may I address this question of density?
Yes, sir.
For a moment. Michael Brown, Walker Jones, we represent the applicants. I, I, I think there is some confusion on the part of the public speakers and maybe on, on the part of the commission in, in equating the construction of a dwelling with somehow having an impact on the density analysis when it comes to subdividing this property. The, the density analysis is based on the acreage. Right, it's, and it's difficult to say conclusively for this, it's split zone. But it's one dwelling per twenty-five acres is what we talk about, the density. So allowing these applicants to build a house on this property doesn't in any way add to the density. If they were to ever go to subdivide this property, they would have to take into account that, okay, there's a house back here, back there on the back property, there's a house here on the front of the property. Those are gonna go on, probably on separate parcels, if they were going to subdivide. Allowing them to build a second dwelling on this two hundred, it's two hundred and fifteen total, ten in Madison, two oh five in Rappahannock, doesn't in any way give them any way to game the system, add any density, it's all about, they've got two hundred, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, right now, these applicants could have submitted a plat to Michelle.
Yeah, that's right.
Where they, where they cut off three fifty-plus acre parcels, left a fifty-plus acre residue, could have recorded that, it, it would have, there would have been no comment. It would have flown through, it could have been recorded. They could, they could be building four houses, right? They gotta take into account the existing, three houses out there right now. So I, I just, I don't get caught up in this idea that somehow allowing this, because we have this provision in our ordinance that, that actually permits more than one dwelling on a parcel, that allowing that dwelling in any way affects the density analysis with respect to subdivision. If we divide the house in the future, but would the house not count as a division?
a division?
Yeah, it's not a division. Just building the house on there is not a division, and it doesn't add any density. They would still only have, let's factor out the 10 acres of Madison. They would still only have 205 acres. And the density analysis for subdivision purposes would be based on that 205 acres. And they would already have two dwellings on that 205-acre parcel. So when it came time to figure out how they were going, in this hypothetical, how they were going to subdivide, they would have to take into account, there's already two houses there.
It would be automatic with the construction of another dwelling, basically.
Yeah, right, yeah. But I just wanted to correct. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm satisfied with that personally.
All right. Any further discussion, or feel like we're at a point where we have any questions or ready to make a motion?
I think Mr. Henry, you know, I don't think he's mad at me, but --
No, 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 no.
Let him make the nomination, so I understand it fully. Make the --
Motion.
I'm sorry, the nomination.
You know, this clarifies what Mr. Brown said. You know, we're not creating density. The land creates density, not the improvements thereof.
No, we are, no, we are creating density.
Well, basically --
But it's accounted for in the future subdivision.
Right, yeah.
We're not allowing any greater density.
Right, it's the same either way. So, yeah. So I have to make a motion that we approve the application as presented. It's pretty straightforward. Simple as that.
And I will second that. I will add, I will add what I was going to say before Mr. Brown volunteered, which I really do appreciate, which I think we had a similar, we had a similar situation back on Holland Road a couple of years ago. And it was the kind of end-of-the-road privacy home, I think it was like 500 acres, and they built the main home. Remember, they invited us all out to come and look around. They were very forthcoming, and they built the main home, and then they built a home on the other side of the pool, and they had installed a kitchen.
It was amazing.
And then they did not want to remove the kitchen similarly because they wanted people to, and I believe that was the same kind of application process that they requested for us to approve it in this sort of a manner. And I do think, when it comes to keeping a large parcel together, there are some instances where this sort of special exception is appropriate. And that's why I seconded the motion.
I will amend my motion that the applicant will focus his construction towards utilizing dark skies lighting.
Dark sky lighting.
All right, and I'll amend my second of the motion to include those details. All right, and with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Y'all are welcome to stay or go as you please. We'll see you soon at the board supervisors. That takes us to the public comment period of the evening. At this point, any members of the public that would like to speak are welcome to do so on any, on any topic. And the public comment period is open. All right, if there's no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public comment closed. The ordinance for transient lodging discussion. Does anyone have anything on that this evening? Michelle, is staff working to fold in previous comments into that grid?
Yeah, so if I could just go over a couple of things?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my voice is starting to get loud.
Okay. Believe me, I understand the right view is terrible.
After I went back and reviewed the meeting of last month, I did add campgrounds to the matrix and updated that on Board docs. And I also made some minor changes to the definitions that were highlighted. And then I went in and took off the uses in the conservation zoning districts such as country ends, conference zones, and take campground from that for being able to apply for a special exception. One thing I do bring to the commission's attention is that some of these definitions are a little outdated. If the commission wants to dive deeper into this, into separating out different definitions, if anybody has an opinion on that or direction, are we looking to keep in basically what we have?
My recollection from our previous discussion was that in reviewing the other definitions, I think Mr. Shulman actually said, I don't know that any of those are any better than what we already have.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
I think that's what he said.
You know, the one question, on the grid, under camp or recreational ground, it says definition only.
Right. So we may have a definition only, and then that term is not in the use matrix.
I got it.
Yeah, as I recall, the commission and ultimately the board has addressed the taxonomy, if you will, or the groupings of the different types of uses. And, you know, I think with things like Airbnb and some of these, there aren't always new terms coming into this, but I've always favored, we're not really concerned about what website it's advertised on and what the business plan is particularly. It's more about the transient lodging, the number of people there, how the rooms are configured, and so the things that are related to the impact. And so to try to keep, instead of trying to keep up with all those changing terms that come in and out of this industry, I think I prefer that we keep it to sort of facts that are, that are kind of permanent. And so I think in the most recent changes, some of these things were improvements, not saying they couldn't be improved upon, we shouldn't get rid of things that aren't useful anymore. I don't know why we define terms that we don't use, for example. But I think the, but the focus, as I had recalled the conversation, is that we were really looking to sort of balance and get the sets of standards defined to match the intensity of use of the particular uses. So I don't, I guess that's a long way of saying, I don't think our primary focus, at least, is on the definitions. Right now, it's more on the requirements.
Right, and that we, I think we were looking for consistency
Yeah.
among things like road standards.
Yes, and at least that they were progressively stringent with progressively intense uses, which they currently aren't.
Yes. So it sounds like we are in agreement that there is still work to be done on this, and I'm wondering if it's to a point now where we almost need a work session to suck this out instead of trying to do it in a regularly scheduled meeting.
Nine o'clock on Wednesday is a break.
Yeah, no. So commissioners, what would you think about holding a work session? I would schedule it sooner than later. I know trying to get everything, once November hits, trying to get anything done is really tough during the holidays for folks. So if that's agreeable, we'll circulate some dates and get a work session scheduled for this.
I would just say I have some travel scheduled in, not quite sure exactly when, but this, first to second, October, so really sooner would be much better for me.
That sounds good. And I actually hope to be away some the third week in October, so we'll circulate a Google poll and see if we can't get some dates to align.
Great.
And then the other new business is the data center amendment discussion. I don't have anything on that this evening. Does anybody else have anything? All right.
I thought less was more.
Yeah, that's the way we seem to be headed. List of direction for zoning ordinance amendments from the board supervisors remains unchanged. Anything to add in roundtable discussion?
I would just say, I think this was an interesting meeting. There were some workier things that showed up today, and I appreciate the way the commission kind of worked through them, so thank you all for that.
And I would just add that I did address the contractors yard changes and introduce those to the board supervisors at our last regularly scheduled meeting. I haven't received any feedback on those, but they were on the agenda for review and consideration by the board, so I consider them off our plate until we have instruction for changes or a thumbs up that it's fine as is. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
And you didn't even get your way.
It's better than most things on television. All right, our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 16th. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
So asked.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.